Welcome everybody to the Village of Southampton Planning Commission for the month of November 2023. So we have a short agenda tonight, so we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're gonna do the roll call. So Christian Picot.
Yes.
Michael Anderson.
Here.
Michael Lieberman.
Here.
Michel Bourgat.
Yes.
And myself, Mark Schiffer. So we are, we have a full board tonight. So I just wanted to introduce our new member, Michel. Michel who, because Pamela Gil-Martin is moving out of the area and we really thanked her very much for her service during all these years. And Michel, I'll just give you a little bit of background on Michel. Michel grew up in Strasbourg, France, and after his engineering studies, he moved to New York City and embarked in a career in finance and founded an investment firm. And for the past twenty years, Michel has been a trustee and a chair of the finance committee of his daughter's school. And since twenty six, two thousand and six, he has been here in Southampton Village. So he's a longtime resident. And Michel is mostly interested in helping preserve and improve our village. So thank you, Michel, and we look forward to working with you. The first item on the agenda that we have was to also mention a few new appointments that we have in the village. We have, we have a new justice, Honorable Linda Riley, who is just starting now at the Justice Court. We also had, actually last night, we thanked Charlene for, Charlene Cagle Betts, for her service for the village, where she really did an outstanding job in the last few years. It was such a short period, but... And now we have Anthony Carter, who is gonna replace her as the new village administrator. And Anthony, I think, will be starting either this week or next week. And Anthony was the deputy police commissioner for the Suffolk County Police Department. And before that, he had spent twenty-eight years with the NYPD. Anthony is from the area. He grew up in Manorville, and he resides in the West High Slip. And he holds a master's degree from the Homeland Security. So we are in good hands here with Anthony, and we also look forward to working with him. Another new person who has just also joined the village, her name is Eileen Powers, as the new village attorney. Eileen is also very much a local. She graduated from the Mercy High School in Riverhead in nineteen eighty-five, and then she went to work for the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office. And in nineteen ninety-nine, she was actually with the Suffolk County District Attorney, where she was the bureau chief for the Major Crimes Unit. So, and after that, she, Eileen went to work for the town of Southampton as an assistant town attorney. And then she went to have her own practice, worked in Riverhead. And then in twenty seventeen, Eileen was elected as a Southhold Town Justice. And so Eileen lives in Southhold and with her husband Larry and her three young children. So we're really very fortunate to have Eileen Powers as her attorney. She's very seasoned, very experienced, both in regulatory issues as well as in municipal issues. Another person who has joined us also, is gonna be starting, I think, next week, is the new enforcement officer, Charlie Pellez. We also have a new, well, Steve Phillips, and I hope everybody read the Village Newsletter, where Steve Phillips is now the new head of the Department of Public Works. And Steve started back, started back to work for the Department of Public Works back in nineteen ninety-nine. Steve was born and raised in Southampton, and he's now the new person in charge of Public Works, which does all the village building maintenance, snow removal, drainage, and anything relating to public works, including the trees, I believe. And we also have a new member of the planning board, Deborah Edwards. Deborah is replacing Orson Cummings on the, on the planning board, and she's also, I believe, starting either this week or next week. And she has a degree, Deborah has a degree, a master's degree in public health, and has been, and she's associated, her husband is Patrick, who is the rector of Saint John's Church and the vicar at Saint Andrews Doon Church. So it's also a great person. We are really very lucky, and I'd like to congratulate the mayor for being able to recruit such a great team for the village. So this, moving along, the next item that we have on the agenda is some reports on some of the task force that we have. The first one is the improvement of the cell service in the village. So you wanna?
Sure, I'll, I'll address that, and I wish the title was more about the improvement of public safety for our first responders, and from there, we hope to improve what I'll call public nuisance, which is wireless service reception. But our first focus is our first responder in public safety. So a few things that happened since we last met. We had a very long and productive conversation with the folks from Verizon for a couple of hours, including the head of their real estate, to discuss some of the, some of the issues that Verizon has in terms of congestion. These are different issues than AT&amp;T, which is really an issue of propagation. We had two constructive meetings with the folks of AT&amp;T as well. And I think what we're learning from these discussions is that both the major carriers are extremely constructive in working with the village in terms of whatever solution we come up with, and that's really good news. We've also had discussions with Crown Castle, learning about T-Mobile's strategy, which is a little different. So first, as far as Verizon and AT&amp;T, their solutions are different in terms of location, where they have issues within the village. AT&amp;T has really issues down in the southwest quadrant, whereas Verizon wishes to bulk their seven hundred gigahertz frequencies around, let's call it village hall area, sort of business district. So different needs from both carriers. As far as T-Mobile is concerned, their strategy is different. They are, they have signed with Crown Castle a twelve-year contract back in January of twenty twenty-two to deploy nodes throughout the country. They have a backlog of more than sixty thousand nodes that they want to deploy in the country, and these are different cellular approach in terms of propagating the T-Mobile signal. We understand that possibly as part of this deployment, in the south fork, they'd like to deploy five hundred nodes between the canal and Montauk. So it brings us to the first phase of our work, which is to update the village code so that we can deal with the two thousand and eighteen FCC order, which allows a carrier to come into a community's right away and install these nodes. So what we wanna make sure is that our code is updated to deal with the permitting process and the aesthetics that we would like to have when a carrier comes in and installs nodes in right of ways. So we're, we're starting to work on that with Eileen Powers. That's really it, and what I'd simply like to say is that for the public and our residents in this commission, I will be presenting on the twenty-first of November at a work session some of our findings, and we'll spend also time importantly with the deficiencies that our first responders, mainly fire and EMS, are facing in the village in terms of signal and communication, which is what we want to solve for first. So I'm gonna be working with them to make sure that those are addressed first, and they'll help us in presenting on the twenty-first of November. That's it.
Yeah, okay. So by way of background, you know, this issue came about because Verizon has a fairly strong backbone in the area, and whoever has Verizon doesn't have much problems. Include Verizon, for example, the town of Southampton uses Verizon as their main carrier, and all their cell phones are over Verizon. So that's where the problem came about. When you're not a Verizon customer, the cell signal in the area is really abysmal. So, and also, we have, we are in contact with the town that has just approved the construction of two major antenna towers, one on by Chinook Bay, near the Coast Guard, and one at the North Sea Transfer Stations. So the way the, the town structured those two antennas, basically, they are, they entered into a, issued a request for proposal, and then they are basically leasing the land to, I believe, the, I'm not sure if it was completely yet finalized, who was the, the person who won the contract, but this person will then be responsible to build the antenna and will lease the antennas to various carriers. So one being, they both, I think, will be able to service the village to some extent, since they are relatively close to the village. So we'll, maybe Michael Anderson?
Michael Anderson will, will, is tasked to go to Janice Sheridan, the town planner, to get a hold of this RFP so that we can have a look at it, since this is actually a business model we're interested in.
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. Get on that tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so the next item on the agenda that we have was the modification of, of chapter twenty, which is this planning commission. And we now have five members. We used to have seven members, and we have five members. We are still in flux. We are, I think it's worth discussing whether we wanna stay at five or maybe make, make five the minimum number and maybe increase the participation. So I don't know if there's anybody has any thoughts on that, or? No?
Hmm.
No, I think the administration would like to keep it to be five members, so right now that's, that's where we're at. And we'll have, make sure that the terms are staggered, so there is a continuity. So this will work on this. We should be able to have a final resolution by next meeting. Then the next item that we have here on the agenda was the proposed code amendments. There's a regarding permeable surface in new development, as well as when people modify the grades in, on, on construction sites by either importing fill or removing fill, and we thought that there should be a, our regulations should be clarified. And I think, Michael, you worked on that?
Yes, I took a look at Sagaponix code, spoke to the town of Southampton. Their code's pretty thorough. It's part of site plan review, and they have a permitting process, which the planning board, I think at some point, was a part of the reviewing process in Sagaponix, but it's, they apparently abolished that in two thousand and eleven, so it's a board action. I think it makes a lot of sense to adopt it within our village. We just gotta kind of figure out where it belongs under code and as well as a structure, you know. The way, automatically, when I looked at it, I started thinking about how it would fit within the village code, thinking about definitions, and obviously it belongs in zoning, probably under our dimensions section, but it seems like a pretty low lift. If you guys have any questions about specifically, they can go into it.
So you'd, you'd put it down on somewhere in section one sixteen as a proposal. Are you, are you going to provide like a word document as to where you'd put in the code and what you'd have? Because that's what we'd need to be looking at, right?
Well, I think, I guess, the next step was, we want, do we want to recommend this to the board?
Yeah.
I can provide a memo suggesting where I think it belongs in the code.
Okay.
But it's not structured. Their code is more similar to town Southampton.
Right.
Versus the village. We'd want, they'd have to break it out and amend other sections of, excuse me, we'd have to break it out and amend other sections of the village code, whereas their code is just in one area. Definitions, everything. So we would just have to figure out what that looks like exactly. But it belongs in zoning. It probably belongs after our portion that speaks about berms and soil movement. But there's probably some layer of figuring exactly where it matches.
Right. So by way of background, some, where the issue comes very often is when people modify the grades and raise the grade, because the, for the pyramid law purposes, the maximum height is measured from natural grade. So if you bring in fill or you create a retaining wall at the property lines, that becomes your new natural grade, and you're able to gain a few feet on the house or get the houses a little closer to the property line. So there is also, in the state code, there is a requirement for any property over an acre to submit a stormwater.
A SWIP?
A SWIP, yes, a SWIP, which I'm not sure it's really enforced in the village, where we have a few properties that are over an acre, especially the ones on the waterfront.
This seemed like a low lift approach, because it's a part of the site plan. So within the site plan review of a parcel, there is a, there's definitions clearly defining what the importation of fill looks like, exportation, excavation. And so I think it's, it's a pretty uncomplicated way to add another layer to the site plan process and ensure that people, you know, that we regulate this to some degree.
So would you wanna add that to the fill, or is that part of the fill?
It's part of it.
Part of it, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would depend. You'd, we'd, so we'd put the code within zoning, and then you gotta cross-reference our, the site plan process, whatever portion of our code speaks to site plans and see if it needs to be referenced, or if there's something that doesn't negate what we're pointing out. Also, I have to speak to Sagaponix to get an idea is, what, what is this actually working? Are they able to enforce it, you know? And so we might get some firsthand perspective, whether or not.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, so I haven't been able to get in touch with anyone yet. I did speak to town Southampton. This is on their radar as well. They need to adopt a similar code. You know, it's, it's similar dilemma to shoreline development, where if you have hardened shorelines, then your neighbors who do not have hardened shorelines are impacted, whereas if everyone's hardened, then it's okay. It's the same approach here.
Yeah, and I think this all sort of bubbled up as a result of the heavy range during August, and everybody sort of realized what's been going on in terms of those construction and fills in the last three years. And to me, as a planning commission member, I'd highly favor that we go down that path.
Yeah, I mean.
It makes a ton of sense, and I know the mayor really was want, put this on our agenda to study.
The existing code puts it on the homeowner to maintain how water moves on and off their property, and, but then it ends up being a civil matter, which, this is a part, part of the review process of the site plan. So theoretically, we will, we will know who's moving the soil and in what capacity, and therefore it's regulated, and then we don't end up with these civil disputes over, you flooded my property, pay for it. And that's what's been happening. And I used to get calls about that back at the town five, six years ago. So it's a thing.
So from a proposal perspective, when do you think you can have time to get this?
Well, I think it'd be, I think it's wise that I first reach out to Sagaponix. Following that conversation, which, you know, as a layfolk calling the village, trying to get answers about a code, it's not always easy.
Yeah, well, we can put on the work session on eleven twenty-one to discuss it, if you can have a draft by then, three weeks.
Sure, I mean, it's gonna be a simple recommendation. I'm not going to write the code.
No, no, I said, well, let's, and then we'll, Eileen will, Eileen Powers will then.
Yeah, sure. That's, that's.
But at least we have the, the big lines. And I think the, the big issue, I think, are mostly for the waterfront property, and also the fact that they don't enforce the SWIP, because the, the.
Can I suggest something?
Oh, Alex is here. Hey, Alex.
Hey, Alex.
Hi, I just wanted to make a distinction that residential property, single-family residential property does not go through the site plan review process.
I was wondering about that.
No, that, that process is for commercial and multifamily.
So.
Because most of, not all of the waterfront is zoned for single-family residents. That wouldn't be the appropriate process. The other part is that SWIPs are performed for properties over one acre. They're done through the building department and reviewed by the village's environmental consultants.
So here's a question then. They have a fill permit process. So this, is that how we do it, via permit instead of site plan? They reference both site plan and a, a fill permit process, so I'm assuming when it's commercial, it'll go through site plan, site plan review, and when it's not commercial, there'd be some other permanent permit mechanism?
When you say, are you talking about the villages of Sagaponix?
Yeah, we're using that as our case study, or our demonstration project.
Understood. Yeah, I don't believe that the village has a specific permit for that.
No.
There's regulations about retaining walls and things, and they're typically reviewed in conjunction with a permit.
Yeah, I mean, one possibility would be to require that a SWIP, the, the state law requires that a SWIP be submitted, a stormwater protection plan be submitted for any property over an acre, and maybe the village could adopt it to say that it's required for any property less, that's it, more than half an acre. And that could.
What do you think, Michael, this?
Um, I'm thinking when, when an homeowner wants to build a retaining wall, what's that process look like?
I believe they would apply for a building permit, and then there was recently some code amendments with regard to the height and location of retaining walls. And I think what it says is that in certain cases, they refer to the village engineer.
So it could be, it could connect with the building permit process then? It could be an extension of the building permit process as a fill permit? And it would still belong in one sixteen, but, yeah, that would, that makes sense. So it doesn't necessarily change where it belongs in the code, it just changes how, when it's reviewed. Or how it's reviewed, and by whom. The, the planning board would also still have then a say over this, I'm assuming? Or is it only for the planning board? It's commercial?
It typically would not go to the planning board for a single-family residential.
Okay, so it would go to the planning board in the case of a site plan for commercial? Okay, that, yeah, that all makes sense. Thanks for catching me up to speed.
Sure.
All right, so let's set up as a target that we have a draft maybe on the twenty-first, and then we can vote on it in the next meeting. The next item that we have here on the agenda was, is the creation of a bid, a business improvement district for our village center. I had a meeting with Eldon Scott, and I hope that he'll be able to come up with a little presentation. He's leading a task force on this, and I think it's a very, very good idea to, it would allow all of the retailers, all of the businesses within the village business district, would create a vehicle for them to communicate, to speak to each other, to organize events, and maybe try to, you know, develop all kinds of programs. So I think it's a very good idea, and Eldon Scott, as who used to be a member of the planning commission, is spearheading this effort. So we look forward to hearing from him on December seventh, and we are encouraging anybody in the public to, who is interested in this, who is interested to be also involved, to come at our next meeting on December seventh. It's a, so business improvement district allows, is, is a, allows the, to impose a tax on the businesses that are within that district and participate to be able to raise funds, to participate and create events, and from cleaning to benches and so and so forth. The, um, so any comments on this, or no?
I have a question. Is, does, doesn't the Chamber of Commerce do that already?
So the Chamber of Commerce does manage our, the art fair and the, 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 the market. But otherwise, no, they are, our Chamber of Commerce is here. They are in a village on building. But a bid would be an entity that actually is able to impose and is a mandatory contribution from, from every single vendor within the district.
Okay. What's the intent of this, just so I?
The intent is to create more vibrancy to the village business district in terms of retailing.
So they'll impose a, a tax on vendors, and then use that tax for the purpose of?
Of creating, of organizing events, cleaning up better, organizing, they, they, be able to organize.
And is this coming from the mayor's office?
Yeah, coming from the mayor's office, and Eldon Scott is spearheading this, and with also a trustee Stevenson, who is also, I think, we have been discussing this for years and years.
Yeah, I just.
I think it's a great idea.
I wonder, when I think about what the problems within our downtown, it's not, I don't think it's a, a lack of events or it's not clean enough. It's probably affordability. People can't actually afford a storefront. So I would wonder if imposing an additional tax would actually solve anything?
Well, it creates a vehicle for them to communicate, you know, to, I think there could be some events. We had organized a few years ago, some events where there was, there were no cars. You remember, there were like, things like this, organize the events. No, I think it's, it's positive all around. So we'll, we'll look forward to the presentation next month. So the next item on the agenda that we have is the efforts to participate in the Community Housing Fund that the town has created, and now is charging half a percent on all of the real estate transactions. And money is starting to come into that fund. The, so I will actually make a little presentation at our next meeting on what is the status of this. We have a representative. The Community Housing Fund has an advisory board at the town, and we, because we signed on to the, to their program, the village, we have a representative who is, who is the, our representative for the, our Community Housing Fund.
J.D. Singh.
J.D. Singh. We have J.D. Singh, who represents the village on this advisory committee. So at the next meeting, we'll have a little presentation on this. The next item on the agenda is, um, also will be, will have, to the next meeting, which is try to have initiatives and to make the village greener. And maybe Michel could, well, we wanna try to create a task force here to make the village a little greener, more environmentally friendly, more sustainable.
Can I just say that we already have Johnson Control doing a lot of that?
On the village buildings.
On the village buildings, yeah.
Yeah, here I'm talking more like a lot.
Climate action planning?
Yeah, here recycling, being able to, to.
It's like a sustainability plan.
Right, to make, make it easier to, let's say, recycle, make it easier.
Are you familiar with this town Southampton sustainability plan?
No.
Why are you signing, why are you putting Michel there as opposed to our environmentalist here, Mr. Lieberman, who's far better equipped for that sort of stuff?
You're right, you're right.
This is true. I've, I've tried this before, and I didn't get a lot of, I didn't get very far.
You're talking about New York Serta.
I'm talking about Nicerda, Stretch Code.
Stretch Code.
Yeah, but these are different, these are different. Here it's more like.
That Stretch Code is probably the biggest thing one could do as.
That's a big item to chew on.
Well, not necessarily, and especially now the town has already adopted it, but, you know, reducing, making homes more efficient and reducing energy consumption, that's gonna be more so than us planting. That's gonna be more so than us planting a few trees, and should be told, you know, the, the, the built environment accounts for the most impacts on, on carbon emissions.
Right, but here I'm talking about, uh, you know, like, maybe reducing more and more the, the plastic bags. Trying to reduce more, you know, try to make it more recyclable to, you know, it's impossible to recycle, to find a place where you, to bring your recyclables here right now. So, and, uh, you know, more a- along that vein, rather than the energy that's governed for renovations or, uh, a new construction.
If this, does you, do you have interest in this?
It's not my field, no.
So let, well, so, so let Michael, so we'll, I will assign Michael to, to, we'll work, I'll, I'll work with Michael on this.
Mm-hmm.
I'll work with Michael on this. Come on. The next one was, uh, the, the pickleball courts. I, actually, I had, uh.
Maybe this is more your speed?
I play tennis, yes.
Yes.
But not pickle.
Oh, so we'll, we'll.
I've, I've, I've been hired by Christian already on the cellular and on the, um, on the local code violations and offenses. Maybe I should focus on these two projects first before I take on.
Fair, fair.
Fair enough, fair enough. So the pickleball, uh, I started to, uh, uh, I looked at the regulations that were, uh, uh, enacted in East Hampton. The, the issue here that we are dealing with is, uh, uh, people using or converting their, uh, tennis courts, uh, to pickleball. And although it sounds like, uh, very, um, it's not an issue, there's an issue about s- noise.
Noise.
Noise. Where pickleball is more like ping pong, and it's, uh, and when this conversion is done on sites that are like, uh, close to other residential houses, it creates an issue. Um, you know, we can think about two or three places in the village where it is an issue, so there's few municipalities are looking into it, will, will look into it also. The next task force was, uh, the one that, uh, Michelle is gonna be looking into, uh, which is to review our Local Law seven, to review the, the penalties and procedures in connection with uh, local code violations, vill- village code violations.
Yep.
So, I also spoke to James, uh, Sandnes, who is an attorney, uh, in the village, uh, who will be glad to also, uh, give a hand, and we'll, so we'll put together a task force. Maybe you can suggest a
Okay.
cou- couple of more people, and then.
What's the last name of James?
James Sandnes, S A N D N E S. Lives on Hill Street. Um, and very involved in the village. Likes a good person, so we'll, uh, it's, and now we have a new judge coming on board, a new attor- a- and Eileen Powers, uh, was also herself a, a, a judge, and there was, she was gonna send us, um, some, a few, couple of years ago during the pandemic, they actually asked every ju- every village and municipal court to review their procedures and review the penalties and so and so forth. And, and unfortunately, it was not done with the Village of Southampton.
Was there a report produced as a result of that that we could look at?
Yes, there was. Right, so sh- the village did not do it.
I got it.
But, uh, she was working at, in South Hall, she's a judge in South Hall, and in South Hall they did it. So they have the re- we have the report from South Hall.
That's definitely something to read.
Yes, definitely. So it's, uh, it's a great, I spoke to Eileen about it, she's, she sent it to us.
Okay.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is, um, so but again, we would like, if anybody in the public would like to participate in this, uh, effort, you know, please, you know, speak to any of us, and, uh, we'll welcome your input.
I think I see a hand in the back.
Yeah. So the, the next point on the agenda is the mobility and transportation. Um, I mean, you want to bring up, Michael?
Yeah, um, so, uh, the Transportation Alternative Program was recently announced, uh, well, actually in the beginning of the month. Um, and this is a program that, uh, basically funnels federal dollars into the New York State DOT to then be administered, uh, out by New York State DOT to local municipalities for projects such as, um, pedestrian, uh, focus biking routes, uh, walkable communities, it's paving, striping, um, kind of, anything that doesn't have to do with a car. Uh, really could kind of fit into the TAP umbrella. We've had some internal conversations about how these, how, if the village were to pursue a TAP grant, where would that make sense, and, and what projects we do we have, and we have obviously some intersections in this community that could be restripped, we have some, uh, very wide roads that could be restripped and redesigned to, uh, provide more and, and safer access for biking. Um, so this is something that I'm, I've flagged with Suffolk County, and then I brought to our attention recently. Um, so I wanted to bring this to this, our, uh, our meeting tonight to talk about it.
Is that where that TAP grant comes in?
Mm-hmm.
Did you want to talk a bit about the TAP grant or not?
That was that whole spiel.
Okay.
Oh, I can speak specifically about what we're thinking in regards to where it could be. Cause I know we, um, we're contemplating, what community assets do we want to connect?
Right.
You know, how do we get people from our downtown to our beaches? How do we make sure that communities that are high in density um, also have safe access to downtown and then beyond? And, you know, these projects are a twenty percent match, but a cap of five million dollars, so that could be a lot. You know, we, we could, you know, theoretically review some of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan and use these funds to implement them. Um, so I, I don't know if Alex, you have any thoughts, um, as you're probably for, more familiar, um, on specific recommendations that have to do with pedestrian circulation and, and biking, uh, within the downtown? And perhaps the TAP grant being a way to get some capital, uh, funding?
I'd have to review the details of the comp plan. I know there was a section on bike and ped improvements, um, some of that, as you know, has already been implemented in some of the bike lanes um, through, uh, the downtown, um, but certainly we, we can revisit that, and I'm sure that there's other, uh, recommendations in there that could be implemented.
There's also a requirement, well, so there's a pre-submission by the end of the month, November twenty eighth. And then following that submission, we get feedback on our application. Um, I think there's also a requirement where the municipality has to attend one of the webinars that New York State DOT has put on, and I think there's been three at this point. Um, they might be finished, but it might be a phone call to New York State, State DOT and say that, you know, we missed one, we'd like to, you know, and they may put on another.
Well, I think we'd be ve- if maybe Alex could, uh, uh, attend.
Yeah, it, it has to be like a staff member.
Yeah, A- A- Alex could maybe attend the web- this webinar with the state.
I think the point, Alex, is that some of the work that you said had been already done, uh, there might be, uh, inside the planning, some more work that could be done, and it could be financed eighty percent by this TAP grant. So if it costs you a hundred thousand dollars to do something, uh, we could have eighty thousand of it through the TAP.
Right, so.
Right? Is that my understanding of this properly?
Uh, twenty percent match, but, yeah, yes, yeah. You said a hundred thousand and eighty?
A hundred thousand, you can borrow eighty, you can get eighty in grant and twenty you put down.
There might be a minimum to the size of the project, the maximum is five million.
So it's just a question of accessing these grants for specifically some of the stuff that we've
Absolutely.
may want to continue doing, like, like that.
Other striping projects, or the project along Pond Lane, uh, projects to and from the county park to the downtown, if it made sense, if the right of way was wide enough. Um, but this is a, you know, these are not funds to be used for the purpose of planning only, they are for planning and construction. And we don't often, uh, see grants that are an eighty-twenty match, you know, it's usually fifty-fifty.
All right, so we'll, we'll make sure that, uh, you know, we, the village is, uh, is part of it and attends, uh, the, the, whatever is required by the county or the state. So you, will you let, uh, Alex know then about the date and the?
I, those, I, November twenty eighth, Alex, is the preliminary, uh, submission date. But I don't know the dates, you'd have to check New York State DOT website and perhaps reach out to them.
Maybe the two of you could speak and adjust on a one-on-one and have that more detailed discussion to see where there might be some interesting points to, to tap if we want to do that. I don't know what else is planned for that out of the master plan.
Alex, you have any thoughts on this, or are, are you familiar with TAP grants?
Not especially, we probably have to coordinate with, uh, Department of Public Works.
Okay. All right, very good. So the next item that we have is actually from, with Alex, any updates on this architectural review and our histor- historical structure survey?
Uh, there's really nothing to share on that, um, project has not moved back to its next phase yet.
It has not, but have they completed the, have they made the presentation yet? I don't, I don't remember.
Uh, there's no, uh, real, uh, presentation, it just, uh, the village has to decide how to fund and proceed, um, and procure someone to complete the, the next step, so that would be necessary.
Mm-hmm. And but right now it's be- the, it's being done under the ARB, the ARB is leading the.
Correct.
Is, 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 is leading the effort. Okay, very good. Cause I think it's, it's one of the big issues to make sure that we protect our village in terms of history, in terms of, uh, historical structure, that's one of primary, uh, goals. Next item that we have on the agenda was, uh, a few items. Where, has there been any movement on this, uh, the seven point two one, the lot coverage? The calculations for, um, lot coverage for waterfront properties? Has there been any, Alex?
Right now it is calculated to, I believe, need high tide, the language of the code uses. I understand that there's been a proposal, um, that there may be other ways to calculate it. Um, as far as I know, the trustees have not scheduled any, uh, public hearing on that. I haven't seen if there's been a specific draft, uh, proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, that's, uh, an idea.
Right. I mean, it is, uh, we are, I believe, the, the only village that calculates the lot area for purposes of, uh, lot coverage calculation to the high water mark. Most of them take it either to the, uh, crest of Dune or the coastal erosion line, which makes the lot, a lot smaller for, uh, buildability. Uh, the high water mark makes it, the lot much bigger, so it yields houses that are much larger. It's, um, uh, the issue is mostly at, on the oceanfront properties, where that's a big difference. The next point that we have was, uh, well, the validity of certificate of occupancy during renovation. Has, has this been an issue, Alex, or?
Uh, I don't know where this, uh, suggestion came from. I haven't heard any discussion of it.
Well, this discussion came, I think it came from the ARB for, uh, that, uh, if you have a a, uh, a renovation in a house, do you need a new certificate of occupancy, or does the old certificate of occupancy remain? And can you still occupy the house while you do the renovation? Is it, uh, I think it's something to look into. The, um, you know, whether, a- a- at which point does a certificate of occupancy needs to be? Do, do you need a new certificate of occupancy, and, and at which point do you allow the person to remain in the house during the construction? No, it hasn't been an issue, Alex?
I'm, maybe, um, in, in one or two cases, I, my understanding is that certificate of occupancy is required any time that there's new work done on the house, any time that there's a, a new permit, uh, issued.
Mm-hmm. Well, there's a sort of bit of compliance that gets issued, not necessarily, okay. All right, and, uh, the next point was, have you had any suggestions, or are you working on any other items that to improve the approval process of co- in terms of coordination of applications within the various boards?
Yes, we're, um, actually, we're, the, the building department is implementing a new protocol for reviewing, uh, sign permits. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, internal discussion about how that process has been handled at the Architecture Review Board. Um, so we have a new application form that we've implemented, built a new protocol and a new flow chart, and we're gonna be coordinating um, with the building inspectors to ensure that signs are done in accordance with village code and with our new code enforcement officer, to make sure that we can have more streamlined, uh, enforcement. So that's gonna be, um, making sure that we have, uh, more clarity, uh, in the process, which is something we've heard a lot of applicants, uh, asking for.
Right. So this would be something also that maybe a bid, the Business Improvement District could maybe help develop in terms of the signage, just some uniformity to the signage and so and so forth. Okay, yeah, that's a very good point. Great. All right, the the next point was about, uh, the village, maybe adding a, a module for Civic, with Civic Plus to be able to have the uh, building permit applications a little bit more transparent, so we can have, uh, but I think this is in the works. And there is a, I think the building department has a program, don't they, that, that we have not used? Are you familiar with, Alex?
I know that Civic Plus is the platform that, uh, Village uses, uh, for the website. Um, I understand it has some kind of permitting capabilities, um, that we have not, uh, that are not fully up and running at, at this point. And there's been, uh, some discussion about whether we're, we're just gonna switch to that platform or to another platform.
Right. I, I think that a few years back, when I think Chris Talbot was, uh, the, the village purchased a, another program to manage the, the permitting process, but this was never implemented. I don't know if we still have the license, maybe you can look into it.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure, that, uh, that predates me. I know we currently have a program, um, called Minisit- Minisity, uh, that we use to track permits. I understand it's, I don't believe it's web-based, um, like some of the, uh, the other programs are. Um, so there's discussion about whether we're going to continue with that or switch to something that would be a little bit more, uh, web-based.
Mm-hmm. All right, right, well, I think we should continue that effort.
Alex, can I ask, wh- how, uh, what does, um, GovPilot do for a building department?
I don't know that I'm fully familiar with, uh, with GovPilot. I may be confusing it with, uh, with Civic Plus.
No, no, Civic Plus, we're using Civic Plus. GovPilot is the program that was purchased under Chris Talbot. But it was never implemented.
Well, what does it do? I mean, what, what is the difference? My question is, what is the difference between a, of, of this, this GovPilot and Civic Plus?
It's a competitive program.
So it's, it's, okay, they're competitors, but if the, uh, mission is the same.
Mission is the same. The mission, it allows to fill out all your applications online. It allows the public to look at the status of application.
So, but why recommend Civic Plus if the village has had, uh, GovPilot and just hasn't turned it on or learned how to use it? But why?
It's because, uh, Civic Plus is, uh, the village already uses Civic Plus for many, Civic Plus has many modules.
Right.
And the village already uses Civic Plus for other functions, so that we'd be able to integrate it, uh, easier. Uh, Civic Plus is a very widely used program in this area. The town uses Civic Plus. So it's, we have a lot of, there's a lot of more people who know Civic Plus, who understand Civic Plus. Brookhaven uses it.
But, so Alex, you're not familiar with any of this conversation?
Yeah, I, I know that we, we, we have this program called GovPilot. I understand, um, it has certain capabilities, but they're, we're currently not up and running on it. Um, and, but we are using, um, Civic Plus, and, and that's how we post, um, agendas to the, to the website, and I believe the village website is running on that platform.
Okay. All right, it's something to continue to work on. All right, the next item is to see whether there's any public comments or discussions or anything.
Yeah, I, uh, if I may, Mark, I just want to update the, uh, public, village residents, and this board. A couple of things I've been doing in the past month. As everybody knows, we, uh, created, um, a Tree City USA, uh, Planning Board, Christian, Laura, a lot of people did a lot of work to create this. We are having, uh, part of being a Tree City USA is having monthly meetings with a tree committee, which has been established. Uh, Steve Phillips, Public Works, uh, trustee Arresta attends the meetings. I've been attending the meetings as the liaison, just to make sure things keep running smoothly and, um, if there are any updates that the public needs to know to let them know, or you guys need to know. Right now, um, we're looking for a tree inventory proposal. We have a contract that came in the last month, last meeting. They're going to give us a proposal to do it, uh, first of its kind in this village, actually, uh, a tree inventory of what kind, of what trees we have.
Is this street trees or, or street trees? Is this street trees or street trees?
These are all public trees.
Yeah, street trees, yeah, village-owned trees.
I was curious.
Um, so that's first step there, we're making progress there. Um, as far as the deer task force
Sorry, Mike, a question before you leave that topic. On public trees, I I had, um, thought or had some some quick discussions with trustee Arresta on the start process and I'd like to simply talk just very briefly. Um, we have a village where we plant these one to two inch caliber trees, which frankly, um, are out of sort with with this community in terms of the of of how young these trees are. And I I always had the the dream that we could have, um, a nursery on village property. We have enough of these lots where we could actually plant these trees and pick them up five, six years down the pike to actually be planting them, as opposed to be planting, you know, these Charlie Brown looking trees on a community like Southampton Village just doesn't look right to me.
Yeah, that's
Well, that's that's a great idea. Um, what I learned from our last meeting was that, um, you know, we don't necessarily have to plant two inch caliber trees. It's it's all about cost. I know the mayor, Mayor Manger, has asked for the tree committee to go over, um, uh, tree committee to go over, uh, North Sea Road road, to go over to see how we can improve the aesthetics of North Sea Road, the main road that's coming into the village. He asked the tree committee to look into that as to how we could make that prettier, nicer. Uh, I know we're in the process now of actually taking some trees, dead trees down on that corridor. But I I could see, I could speak to trustee Arresta myself about village-owned trees, you know.
Yeah, because right now I think we're purchasing trees on the North Fork, you know, that are really one to two inch caliber. We're paying two hundred fifty dollars for it. We have a modest tree purchase budget, which I think in the budget line, when I did the Tree City application, was thirty-five thousand dollars. So we're gonna come into a budgetary process, um, and it would be interesting to see how you could stretch those dollars. But also just simply plant some of those trees, protect them from the deer for the for their growing period and and pick them five years down the pike. I mean, we have unused land everywhere and we should be, um, thinking about a nursery program. That'd be great if you could
Good idea.
think about that and 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 push it along. I mean, the pushback has always been, you know, deer and and watering, deer and watering. But but to me, there are ways to manage that. It's cannot be an obje- it cannot be the only reason to object to it. There are ways to do it.
And there are some also major trees where the the wires are going right through it that really will need to be addressed very, you know, very soon.
What what are those? Heritage trees? That where you have wires in them?
Yeah, true, but very long, long, very big one, very big one.
And one other thing before I go, um, as far as the deer task force goes, I would just ask the village residents that we are constantly looking for private properties to use. If you have issues with deer on your property, if you could contact either myself or Michael Testori from Suffolk County Deer Management, it would really greatly be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for the update, Michael, very much. And, okay, so if there's anything else that anybody wants to add?
Yeah, I didn't hear a motion to approve the minutes from last month. Could the chair make a motion? I'd be happy to second it if he does.
Or maybe why don't we, I haven't really had a chance to really look at them, so maybe we'll
You guys haven't read the minutes from last month?
I didn't. So we'll we'll approve it next month.
Well, you could you could you could, if you're the only one who hasn't read it, you could always abstain and the rest could vote, but one should read minutes of meetings. All right, let's do it next month.
Let's do it next month. The village, let make a motion to adjourn and schedule our next meeting on December seventh.
Do we want a public portion?
Yeah, the public portion.
Okay.
So meeting to, uh, motion to adjourn, everybody second?
Second.
Aye.
Okay, I, all right, so good night, everybody, and